I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Flugerville City Council at seven P M. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please stand for the pledge, U S and Texas and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Always thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
You may be seated. Our next item is item number three, public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by the city council, no formal action, discussion, deliberation. Our comment will be made by the city council, each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. I have two individuals wishing to speak. Alicia Baxter Rogers.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Gonzalez, esteemed members of the Flugerville City Council and community members. I am Dr. Alicia Baker Rogers and I stand before you as a proud member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Pi Omega Zeta Chapter. Our sorority has a rich history of engaging in community services, education, and health awareness, especially with regards to women's health. According to the American Cancer Society, breast cancer is the second leading cause of cancer death after lung cancer in women in the U S overall, but it is the leading cause of cancer death in black and brown women. The racial disparity in deaths from breast cancer has remained at forty percent or higher for a decade. Part of the reason the breast cancer death rate is not dropping as fast as it has in previous years is because screening rates aren't increasing and too few women are receiving timely and high quality treatment after they're diagnosed with breast cancer. Therefore, in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we are sponsoring a two-day event at the Flugerville Library. Our first day on Friday, October the twenty-seventh. From nine A M. to four P M., we will host the Lone Star Circle of Care Big Pink Bus. Through this initiative, those women who pre-register are uninsured or underinsured have an opportunity to have access to a screening mammogram, a vital tool in the early detection of breast cancer, which can drastically improve treatment outcomes, especially for black and brown women. The second day, Saturday, October the twenty-eighth, from ten A M. to two P M., we will sponsor our Mama Glam Day Party. This event's purpose is twofold. Firstly, to amplify the significance of breast health and secondly, to shed light on the disproportionate impact of breast cancer on black and brown women. Our Mama Glam Day Party will feature a panel discussion led by healthcare professionals, survivors, and advocates to educate, inspire, and foster a sense of support and community. Also, there will be glam vendors so women can engage in self-care activities, turning a topic that can be anxiety-inducing for many into an experience that is both educational and enjoyable. While our sorority is dedicated to make this event a success, the presence and endorsement of our city leaders would make a significant difference. Therefore, we cordially invite all members of the city council and the residents of Flugerville to join us. Let us come together united to prioritize and uplift women's health in our community. Furthermore, we would like to make a special request to our respected mayor. In recognition of the importance of breast health awareness and in support of our event, we respectfully ask that you consider declaring October the twenty-eighth as Zetas Wear Pink Day in the city of Flugerville. This symbolic gesture would not only enhance our outreach, but also serve as a beacon of hope and solidarity for those affected by breast cancer. Together, we can create a ripple effect of awareness and action, ensuring that all women, our mothers, daughters, sisters, and friends, have the knowledge and resources they need to prioritize their health. Thank you for your time and consideration. We eagerly look forward to seeing each of you on the twenty-eighth adorned in pink, collaborating in solidarity with us in this crucial endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Be glad to.
And you all have flyers about the event.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ray Trevino.
Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager and staff. My name is Ray Trevino, I'm the Community Coordinator for Healthy Kids Running here in Flugerville. I just want to thank you guys, the council, Parks and Rec Department, for allowing us to run again this fall. It's been a great season and we're almost, we're more than halfway done with the season, believe it or not, you know, but I just want to publicly thank Shane, Bays, Jonathan, Parks and Rec, Emily from the City Manager's Office for helping us do this and we look forward to doing it again next spring. But I also want to invite you guys, if you guys can, the community also, we have our final run, October twenty-second on a Sunday, I know that's the same day as the Deutschen Fest, the Deutschen Fest five K and other runs. That's in the morning, that's a warm-up for our run, so if you guys want to do that in the morning and come out here and see us, see the kids, that'd be great. That's an invitation for you guys to come out and really would appreciate if you guys would come. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate it. Is there anybody else here wishing to speak under public comment that didn't sign up? Nope, okay, thank you. Our next item is item four, presentations, I have, we have two proclamations, I've asked Mayor Protim twice to read the proclamations, I've got a scratchy throat this evening, I'm afraid I wouldn't make it through it.
Mayor Gonzalez, thank you for the honor that I may present these proclamations tonight. My first proclamation is declaring October twenty-twenty-three as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Flugerville. The citizens of Flugerville value the benefit of good health as a key component of a long, productive, and fulfilling life and proudly support the observances that focus public attention on crucial health issues such as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast cancer is the second most common kind of cancer in women. About one in eight women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some type, at some point in their lives. I know I may be repeating some of your statistics already, you did it better than I did unfortunately, or fortunately. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer, spread the word about mammograms, and encourage communities, organizations, families, and individuals to get involved and participate with Flugerville each Pink Friday in October. And we do have a proclamation declaring, so I, on behalf of Mayor Gonzalez, proclaim October twenty-twenty-three as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Flugerville. The other proclamation we have this evening is declaring October twenty-twenty-three as Community Planning Month in the city of Flugerville. The month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. Changes in our, I think we all know this, change is constant in our communities. They, it affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. Community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. We recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional planners and by the whole Planning and Development Services Department of the city of Flugerville and even our commissioners on our Planning and Zoning Board. Our, we extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. So therefore, on behalf of Mayor Gonzalez, I proclaim October twenty-twenty-three as Community Planning Month in the city of Flugerville. Planning and Development Services Director Jeremy Frizzell, the Planning and Development Services Department, and some members of our Planning and Zoning Commission are here to accept this lovely proclamation. If you would, join me by the, the flag.
Wow, I love you looking at this time. I, I was thinking that people were actually just here excited to come and counsel me.
You've got a lot of projects.
Yeah, that made me laugh. I was like, what was written in the ad?
Robert, you gotta be in front.
Where's Robert?
They all know Robert.
All right, one, two, three. One more, one, two.
She was in it for many years.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Mayor Protim. Our next item, is it an item? Okay, reading of the consent agenda, council, are you wishing to pull anything?
Just, just five N, Mayor.
Five N, okay. May read the consent agenda, Trista.
And that's five N as in Nancy? Thank you. All right, five A, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending the city's code of ordinances, chapter one fifty-two, subchapter B, roadway impact fees to include an updated roadway impact fee service area map and approving a roadway impact fee study twenty-twenty-three update incorporated herein, containing severability and repealer clause and providing an effective date. Item five N has been removed from the consent agenda, all remaining items will be acted upon in a single motion.
So moved, second. And motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. And motion carried unanimously, thank you. Our next item is public hearings and ordinances, Trista, would you mind reading that?
Yes, sir, item six A, conduct a public hearing and consider approving the first reading of an ordinance with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of council of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number twelve zero three dash fifteen dash zero two dash two-four of the city of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by approved in a specific use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility on an approximately twelve-point-two-zero-three acre tract of land, zone plan unit development generally located east of the F M six eighty-five and north of Murgison Ridge Trail situated in Falcon Point, section four A, lot one A, Flugerville, Texas, to be known as a point-of-gray specific use permit, providing a cumulative and repealer clause, providing for a non-severability clause, and providing an effective date.
So moved. Well, I'll second it.
Yeah, well, yeah, it is a public hearing, right?
It's a public hearing. Is there anybody, yes, is there anybody here wishing to speak on this item? Having none.
All right, what was that motion reading?
Motion to close the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion, second, to close the public hearing. Yeah, second.
No, we're not joking.
And motion carried unanimously. Could have a motion to approve.
Motion approved, presented.
Second, motion, second, to approve, item six A.
So I just want to note, as we approve this, I do believe this is, at least the material in our packet demonstrated the improved signal strength and coverage in the Stone Hill and Falcon Point area. I'm very excited about being able to bring this.
And to the mayor's point, that's why we're all like, oh, yes.
But wait, I wanted to have my calls dropped.
It's, my, my last one didn't, and then, oh, let me try that.
Mr. McDonald says. All right, motion carried. It turned out, yes. All right, item seven A, discuss and consider action regarding application requirements for board and commission applicants. I asked this to, for this to be put on the agenda for us to, there have been some questions in the past, even for candidates running for office and commissioners on boards. For the most part, we expect that board members that apply do live in the city limits. There may be cases where they don't know they live in the city limits, which is very rare. But Trista, at this point, what are the basic requirements?
So the basic requirements from the charter is to live in the city for twelve months typically, I believe there's, one of them might be slightly different, and then be a registered voter of the city.
Okay, to live in the city limits for twelve months.
Yes, and be a registered voter of the city.
And but you, but you don't have to prove you live in the city limits.
So the application includes the address and that's what we use to confirm.
That's the only proof we have.
Within the city limits, as well as the, if you're a registered voter in the city, when I confirm through the county, it shows the address that it's registered under.
So the voter registration confirms that they vote in city elections.
That they are authorized to vote in city elections, correct.
If they are a registered voter.
Correct, and if they're not a registered voter, they are not eligible to serve.
If they're not a registered voter, they're not eligible.
That's all I'm saying.
But isn't it true that state law does not require you to re-register if you move within the county? You're only required to re-register if you move to a different county? So you could live in the city of Flugerville, register as a voter in the city of Flugerville, move to Austin, and not have to change your voter registration address? Even though your physical address would have changed and you would no longer be resident of the city of Flugerville? Isn't that correct?
I'm not well-versed enough to answer that question.
Charlie, do you have that?
I mean, I, I think I know Jim and I are probably voter deputy registrars. I, I don't believe that's the case, but we'd have to ask Mr. Elephant that question.
I've never heard that.
I read it in the last week.
I, I think, I, I mean, would it make sense for kids, like when I was at college at U T, I can only imagine I registered once and I moved like four or five times, and I don't think I ever redid it again.
So, right, I think it's different for college students.
Well, he's saying.
But the law applies to everybody.
Yeah, he's saying the, from a county.
So it is possible for somebody to be registered at a, address within the city limits, yet live outside of the city limits and proclaim that they can be a certified board or commissioner.
And that's the point, I guess, I'm trying to make, because I, you know, it's like, I know in the past, especially on the Equity Commission, when it was getting started early, we had a lot of members that were, lived in the E T J and they were excited about it, but when I told them they couldn't be on it because they weren't city residents, although they had a Flugerville address, they were somewhat disappointed. And, and I'm not inviting citizens to maliciously apply with false information or identification or anything like that. But I, I think we need to, you know, my concern is if there's ever a question about a, a candidate on a commission or a commission member, how do you validly prove they are living in the city limits? Other than stalking them, which we don't want to do.
So we have to take them at what they put on the application? We don't have a way to verify residency in this or really any other situation?
It's not just our city, same thing when it comes to elections, you know, the state and national level as well.
Correct, that becomes civil, it's not something that the city can pursue.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you were referring indirectly to a case many years ago when someone ran for city council, thought they lived in the city. There were actually, I think, two doors outside of the city.
On the other side of the street.
And they, we had, and they won the election, and then we had to have a special election to replace that person. It's, it can be accidental.
Sure.
And I think it clearly was in that, in that instance, but it, it does seem that we should have some kind of, some kind of mechanism to double-check that.
But, I mean, again, what we're saying, what we're doing is just as the same as what they're doing at the state, at the county, state, and national level with that, regarding that. If, if somebody wants to challenge it ultimately, they're, they're more than welcome to have a go and, and challenge that. But for our purposes, we're using the same machinations, mechanisms, policies, and procedures that everybody else is with that.
I'm not following your.
You're saying, you're saying that there should be something that we should be able to do to double, triple-check on that. And I'm saying that we're doing what everyone else, our due diligence is at the same level as everybody else regarding that.
So what I saw, I think, Mayor in the packet, I don't know if this was from you or, or someone else, basically is the proposal that we have them sign an affidavit confirming, I don't know if that would be under penalty of perjury or how that works, but just asking that they, we add an affidavit affirming that they knowingly live in the city of limits.
Well, Charlie, to that point, you're already filling out your application and by definition, you know, that's to a government, a governmental entity. So you're saying that you're, and I'm sure we have that clause at the end that says that the information to best abilities is true and accurate.
Is that correct, Trista? I'm not sure that's in the applications.
I would hope that's at the end of our application.
I think you have to do an oath, just like we did.
Right, like something true and accurate to whatever.
Well, I don't think. I'd have to double-check that, I don't recall that being on the application.
There's a statement at the end, by signing this application, I hereby affirm that I'm aware of the requirements for the position and certify that I meet those requirements.
Yeah, that's, that's akin to what you really do with an affidavit anyway. Affidavit is just trying to scare people more, but it's the same thing.
Well, the affidavit, you know, specifically talks about penalties of perjury.
Oh, yeah, but if.
And it, I think people take that more seriously.
Yeah, well, for the most part, over the years, over the last sixteen years, I guess, I mean, I suppose there could have been someone on a board or commission that wasn't in the city limits. I don't think anybody questioned anybody during that time and, and I seriously doubt they were not, you know, they did live in the city limits. I mean, that's the whole point of serving, right?
Literally.
On the other hand, I mean, I got a, an email last week from somebody who was very unhappy that the city of Flugerville had changed their trash service. They live in the E T J. They don't, they, they're, they were convinced that they lived in the city of Flugerville.
Well, but they weren't on a board or commission either, Mr. Trump, or so.
Right, but the, but they, I mean, the, the perception that you live in Flugerville.
Well, I mean, and that's the, and, and I would imagine that there could be an applicant that slips bias every once in a while for one reason or another. You know, we're not, you know, we don't send out the police department to verify their residency or anything like that. But, I mean, if everyone is comfortable with the current standard of application, then we're good. Mr. Rogers, if you have any question about what we need to do, I think we need to discuss it now.
In, in the end, it's up to us to appoint.
So just, just.
We're, we're the final.
Yeah.
Final line to cross.
It, it looks like it's a federal requirement to, if you move, there's no exceptions, it's if you move, you're, you're required to re-register.
No, there's a statement that if you move within the same county, you're eligible to vote the original ballot until your new residence is reflected on your registration, so that would be.
That's allowed, yeah.
Yeah, which.
But.
Until your new residence is reflected on your registration, that presumes that
You're gonna go ahead and do.
Are, are updating your registration.
Right, which, we're Americans, so.
We know. Your, your example about college students was, you know, well-taken, I think, a lot of people move and they think, well, it's closed, whatever, I don't have to re-register.
Moved to New York for college and I still voted when I came back home.
Right.
Because I was still a resident.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be eligible to be on a board or commission back in your hometown when you were, when you were in New York.
To wherewithal to travel three thousand miles.
I was in the middle of the Pacific Ocean and I voted.
Some people do it by mail.
You voted by mail?
I, I moved two doors down and I updated my registration, so.
Right, I, I moved a mile, half a mile, and I updated mine, so.
Okay, I think, I think we've beat this to death already.
Uh, Mayor, I, I know, I guess, I don't know if this is a part of this, if you just want to have this later on. We have talked about, when we're talking about qualifications, we have talked about, or some of us have talked about in the past, probably thrown out a qualification, the PF one oh one, PF, yeah, PF one oh one, be required for an applicant, or some stuff like that. Did you want to have that conversation on this, or we could bring it back later on?
I, I think it should be. I think it should be a preference. I, I think it's included, it's a checkbox on all applications now, isn't it?
It's a preference, I just.
With as popular as the program is, I know we have run out of space, and I think it would do us a disservice to say.
How's it fair to those people who don't get in?
We, we ran out of space in the class, so you can't.
I just worry about some boards, like Planning and Zoning, I mean, yeah, Planning and Zoning, or a PCDC, or the Finance, where somebody gets on there and they really don't know anything about the city, how the city runs, what's going on with the city, they don't know about water.
I think that's a good point, though, our, in particular, our finance and budget does have, that is, I believe, established by ordinance, or is it by resolution? It's not by charter, but, but we have in there.
I think it's by ordinance.
We, we have in that ordinance, I think, or resolution, that says specifically, you must be a CPA or have commensurate finance experience. And I know we have, we've overruled ourselves on that before in appointments. So I think it is important that we, and actually, Jim and I were in a, a session at TML talking about this very topic last week, where we, we probably need to make sure that we're holding ourselves to the standards that we set for ourselves.
And you know what, you know, and the whole argument is, and Charlie, you understand it, we can't be arbitrary and prejudiced. So I was on Budget and Finance, I don't have a CPA degree. I don't really know if I can spell CPA. And so, but our chair was, and so we have their aspects. But you're right, maybe, maybe to your point, maybe a more refined print on that is that, that's an example of a requirement that necessarily is reflective in the other boards and commissions. So maybe there's some specific boards and commissions that you would like some requirements that you like, as, you know, as opposed to just.
Like Planning and Zoning, or PCDC, or, well, I, I'll say those two first. I don't know if y'all have any ideas of what other committees.
We did this at the end, we did this beginning of December, right?
Yeah.
So why don't you think about?
So I would, I would, I would back that up a little bit. So having sat in this, this, this small-town meeting that talked about finding enough volunteers, right? I would not want to put up additional barriers, if you will, of saying, well, we require this, we require this, and you have to have, you know, at least a college credit of, of municipal planning. No, I, I would not want to go down that rabbit hole and, and look at doing something like that for each one of our boards and commissions. What I would like to do, and, and I, I think this sounds much more reasonable, is provide a PF one oh two, right? Look at, if I am on Planning and Zoning, or if I am on the Equity Commission, or if I'm on any board, is, is look at a, a specific orientation program that says, here's, here's recent DEI law in Texas. So that you know, in terms of the framework with which in you're operating, the rules and boundaries, and maybe where you need to stretch those rules and boundaries in terms of what we can, what we can do here. And so, so I, I wouldn't advocate as much for requirements as I would for, once you're appointed, opportunities to educate, so we have better informed boards. And I know we do some of that now, but maybe taking that to the next level is what we need to do here.
And that's a good point, what if we were to say, must attend a PF one oh one class within your first year?
I, I would look, I, I wouldn't want to do it.
No?
I would want to, because that, that adds more to the requirements of showing up for, for the meetings, right? And, and we've got other folks, that's our funnel. That's our funnel for bringing folks into city government. I would look for a separate, a separate program, and, and we can make it specific to, you know, for, for PCDC, right? You have to attend, you know, a, a TML, EDC, or a TEDC, EDC introductory thing. We had to do that for newly-elected officials on the TML, right? They've got, they've got an orientation for us in terms of learning about open records.
We didn't have to do that in PCDC?
Yeah, we had to do, all, all boards and commissions have to do open records.
Have to do.
Yeah, they'll have to do open records.
But something more, more along the lines of just, you know, more in-depth, with the specificity of the board or commission you're serving on.
Right.
So say, something that you're talking about.
That two oh one, or one oh two, whatever you want to call it.
So what you're talking about, how long would that take?
What do you mean?
Those, you said, you know, some kind of class, so they can learn more about what they're doing or something like that? You said, how long would that take?
I, I think it depends on, on the subject matter and, and the board or commission. For, for the eat, for serving on PCDC, it could be a whole day.
Okay.
Right? I, I don't know, is the answer.
No, 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 yeah.
But I, but I, I think.
The PF one oh one is how long, twelve weeks? Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so it could be different for each board or commission. But I, I think that's where you get people that are excited, that have that public service need in them and want to serve and support the community. And then we provide them additional tools to, to create, you know, so that they can do that better.
Yeah, I think depending on, on the board, it can be one to three hours. Eight, eight hours seems a little, a little much, but PCDC does have significant responsibilities. Maybe for PCDC, eight hours is not unreasonable.
I believe that's actually in the PCDC bylaws, that they're, they're required to go through a sales staff workshop.
I thought we did, yeah, I was gonna say, I thought we did some.
PCDC, I'm gonna say is well-covered, and I would imagine most of our other boards and commissions, my expectation wouldn't necessarily be for a class, but really onboarding an orientation with the, with the staff member. And I would expect that we're, we're doing that already.
For Parks and Rec, we didn't require that they mow their own grass.
Yeah.
And they have to run a five K.
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
All right, I'm ready for.
No, but, you know, Parks and Rec orientation, I don't remember doing a.
So we now do, like, for example, PZ gets educational, monthly educational, on planning-related topics. Fab is more treated now as a education. I would call that the one oh two version of finance. And the department heads meet with the new members on the board to help get them oriented. We've tried to up our game on, on all of those, but we can always do a better job of doing so. That's just to give you a little bit about how Fab is, I think, a good example of now a very great educational tool.
So I think this would be more in direction to give the staff to come back to us with some kind of program design for each one of the boards?
I mean, personally, I feel like we're, we're covered.
You doing it already?
I feel like we're doing it already. I'm, I'm not prepared to dump another training session on. Yeah.
Well, this sounds like a lunch-and-learn topic, maybe.
I would say also, in relation to application requirements, I think one of the requirements is that we, we haul them in and interview them at the podium. And I wouldn't mind seeing something a bit less formal in that interview process. I think that can be a bit daunting and, and sometimes overwhelming to the candidates.
But we've had that, I think, we talked about this a couple of years ago.
We did talk about it a couple of years ago.
If we can find an easier way. My argument was, and still is, that was my only one, my one and only opportunity to sell myself to, to.
To the whole city council.
And we've seen how many times somebody has gotten up there, sold us on them, and we've actually appointed them. Whereas maybe we didn't know them, and that's my fault for not knowing them. I, I just like that because it's, it gives them one last shot, shot to sell themselves.
And I want them to have that opportunity, I just don't know that it needs to be in such a, a formal and interrogatory manner.
Because we're so formal here.
Yeah.
Right, let's go Rangers.
All right. Lunch-and-learn then, or something?
If they're not in a tuxedo.
I did not expect for this discussion.
So we're not, not adding anything to the candidacy requirement as far as verification of proof, other than what we currently have. And should something be uncovered, will it, at that time?
Well, what about, what about cross-checking the voter ID with, with TCAD?
Not everyone owns a home.
Not everyone's a homeowner, but if somebody represents themselves as a homeowner.
Just send it to the CIA, let them check them out.
I, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable.
That, that goes back to a hundred years ago, if you had to own land to be a, yeah.
But, but, okay, fine, if you're a renter, you know, show us your lease. Something more than just a voter registration form, which, I mean, you know, I know they're better about this than they used to be, but at one time, I was registered to vote at five different addresses in Travis County simultaneously.
But why are we, why are you asking us to do something different than everyone else does?
I'm not convinced that what we have is working.
Well, I'll just say, I remember Rudy jumping all over somebody at the old place because they, they made a comment about planning and zoning. You remember that, Rudy? And you said, "Don't talk about them that way." Basically, I'm, I'm, you know, paraphrasing, because they are volunteers. They're taking their time to do this, and I don't want to discourage them from being a volunteer. We're all volunteers, but we're at a different level, and, and we're appointing them. I mean, I don't want to discourage, as Jim said, people who really, we're having a hard time getting people in here anyway, so.
I, I think, I think, I think, I think if you'd like to bring this up as further discussion to see about that, I mean, information, that's fine. I'm comfortable with what we're doing right now.
I'm comfortable with not bringing it up again.
Well, you never know.
In the end, it's up to us when we appoint.
Yep, all right.
If we have information.
Let's move on, thank you very much. Let's see, I guess we have the skipped item.
You missed it.
And literally.
Yes, sir, item five N, approving a resolution acknowledging the petition and subsequent release of approximately nineteen point eight six one acres located generally northeast of the Wolfpack Drive and Weisline intersection from the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Flugerville by operation of law in accordance with section forty-two point one zero five D of the Texas Local Government Code.
Mayor, I'd like to move to executive session for advice on item three, five, five N?
Five N.
Five N.
Five N, okay.
All right.
We're in executive session.
We're in executive session.